We'll call the town of Oliver Springs, City Council to meet to order for July 20th. Roll call, Joe.
Barbara Miller.
Here.
Jeff Bass, Kenny Brown.
Here.
Lisa Van Hook.
Here.
Terry Holland.
Here.
Please run. We have four out of six. We got a quorum.
Mr. Joe, would you lead us in with prayer?
Our Father, we come to you tonight offering praise and adoration and thankfulness, wonder and amazement at your love and your strength and your power and your wisdom that you offer for those who seek you with all their soul and all their heart. We pray that in these times of difficulty that we face, that each one of us and our council folks and our citizens and our workers will approach you with an open heart and open mind. Look for your wisdom, receive your wisdom, and then implement your wisdom and your wishes where we can deliver the goods and services that need to be delivered from our body as a government. We pray for our many women in the military, the first responders, and the law enforcement, and fire department, and all those folks that offer us protection and comfort and care in times of great need. We pray for our government on all levels that our people will turn away from the secular things and seek your wisdom and your way because your way is the truth and the light that we all should strive to seek. We ask all these things in my son's name. Amen.
Amen.
I salute, pledge, our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes from the July 13th meeting. We have motion. Make a motion, approval. Do we have a second? Any discussion about the minutes?
Yes, sir. First page under minutes, third paragraph. Board said motion by Van Hook, second by Brown to approve the minutes, dah 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 dah. City reporter Van Hook discussed the memorandum from Jason E. Mullin. That should be M-U-M-P-O-W-Y-R. And that's all I've seen.
Okay? Anything else? Discussion, roll call, Joe.
Barbara Miller.
Yes, sir.
Kenny Brown.
Yes.
Lisa Van Hook.
Yes.
This time, is there any citizen that would like to come forward to speak? If so, just state your name for the record. Yes, sir.
Well, I'm Alan Lutz. I work with the Rome Alliance, and I am the Director of Education Workforce. I have something I'd like to hand you down through to you. I'm here to just give you some information about the Rome Alliance and its support of Oliver Springs and some of the things we've been doing.
Thanks, sir.
I have copies that have been put in some of the pews out there. If you wanted to get a copy, you're welcome to. The first, if you pull the paper clip off, the first thing you'll see is a group of papers like this. One of the things I do in my position is manage the Tennessee Scholars Program. And this past year, there were 11 students from the Oliver Springs High School who worked Tennessee Scholar graduates. We had a total of 70 in the entire county. This is a program, because we had an awards breakfast in the morning of May 3rd, and all the Tennessee Scholar graduates from the county came to the awards breakfast and received medallions and certificates. And on the inside is the name of each of those Tennessee Scholar graduates. And they're grouped, you can see, by school. You also have, within there is the article that appeared in the newspaper. It was also in the Oak Ridge newspaper. And they printed the story and pictures that are here. It also has in the text information about scholarships. Two of the 11 students from Oliver Springs received $500 scholarships. One was from Rome State Community College, and then one was specifically from the Tennessee Scholars Program. But both of those scholarships were because these were Tennessee Scholar students. The Rome County Tennessee Scholars actually gave out a total of 11 scholarships. Rome State gave out six. So it's all 500 dollar scholarships. We also, in the year, we do social media, these are Facebook pages, to talk about the program. What you see here is actually congratulations to sophomores who are on track, two or years ago, on track to graduate as Tennessee Scholars, and identified them by name. Same thing with juniors. Over here are a listing of the scholarship students who received Rome State scholarships. On the backside was a listing of all the scholarships of the other 11 at the schools, and all by name of the Oliver Springs High School graduates. So that's part of what we do, to spread the information about the program. And there's other things we do about encouraging the students to graduate as Tennessee Scholars. Since I'm showing social media, I'll go to the next page. This page is a sample of some of the social media that we do to advertise events and community events. And so these are three of them that were promoting Oliver Springs on social media. And we boosted some of the ads that we've seen that have been posted by you to help get more information out. So that's another one. An upcoming event, which is this flyer, is the National Night Out. And the Oliver Springs Police Department will be participating in that, as with all the law enforcement and a lot of first responders. And that's at the Rome County Park. So I'm going to show you that, and this will end up getting social media publications also. And last, I wanted to point out that this is a list of upcoming tourism-type events that we advertise for all of Rome County, all the communities. October Sky Fest is not one there because it doesn't go out to October. It ends up at the bottom there in September. But I'll be at the October Sky Fest. I'm also a member of the United Way Board of Directors, and I'll be helping out at the United Way Center here. I've been to the October Sky Fest several times as my role as education matters. So I want to give you kind of an update on some of the things we've been doing. If you have any questions, you may be able to answer them.
I don't personally, but thank you for what you do, investing in our students and our kids.
Well, I love what I've been doing. I've been doing it for over a decade, and unfortunately, it will be coming to an end at the end of October. I'll be 70, and my wife needs me at the home more than she thinks anybody else does. So thank you for the opportunity to be serving and helping Oliver Springs during these years. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else this time?
Mayoral update. Just rain, rain, rain. Guys have been doing a good job, you know, making sure that water's flowing, not backing up, flooding things. I appreciate that. Police Department out patrolling, doing what they do. And water sewer, man, I couldn't imagine trying to work out in that today. I know we didn't. All being said, I'm excited about where our town is headed in the coming weeks, days, and months ahead. I've had some really good conversations with businesses, brokers, and hopefully promoting our town, bringing in new business in, which will increase our tax revenue and our base. So I'm excited about that. And once we get this budget behind us, then we have some, I know I was speaking with Rusty, not still in his thunder, but gave him an idea last night, that we'd love to have a movie in the park tonight, hopefully in August, on Friday night, Saturday night. So looking forward to that. October Sky Festival's coming up. Very excited about that, and that's going to be a couple of months. And the Blair Volunteer Fire Department, when is their, is that?
Twenty ninth.
I'm sorry?
Twenty ninth.
The 29th of July, so next Saturday down at the park. It's going to be really big, back-to-school celebration. So excited about that as well. So we got a lot going on as a town, and so Cory, this time?
Thank you, Mr. Ray. First thing, Judge Van Hook brought my office over this week, the lease agreement between Town of Oliver Springs and the Oliver Springs High School Athletic Booster Club and Youth Club. It's been reviewed, everything looks great to me. It's ready for signature if y'all want to look through that. On the budget and the property tax rate increase, one thing we want to make the residents aware of is the property tax relief program for elderly homeowners, disabled homeowners, disabled veteran homeowners, and widower of disabled veteran homeowners. Council has that documentation in front of you. That's the sheets here. And I have documentation out on the desk out when you come into the front door there. Next thing that you should have in your package, the comptroller paperwork. This is the agenda from the meeting the comptroller had yesterday. This is where they went over cases of, the comptroller was actually investigating. Meeting started about 11 o'clock, and we went on about 2:30. It was very brief. If you want to look at the next, last page, it just states that we are under administrative They've asked us to start.
Is that the order department, something you say again?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And it just says, "The entities have always been delinquent for years. Entity has not verified that its rates were set in a manner to improve its financial condition." Additionally, the entity reported non-revenue water loss of 77% on its 2021 American Waterworks Association reporting worksheet. And then it goes on to mention, "The entity has timely contracted with a third party to carry out the rate study, as requested by board staff." Based on, board staff met with leadership, management, staff of Oliver Springs in June 2023, but has been able to finish their administrative review report. Board staff will update the board in the next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be in October. So look forward to the comptroller to feedback for second interviews, a little bit more in-depth investigation, probably your November, December timeframe. One thing that they talked about was, and it could be this sheet right here that you all have, is making sure that your board members, and this is for the water board, make sure they're up to date on their training, continued education. So it mandates that new board members must get 12 hours of training within one year after initial appointment or election to municipal utilities governing board. Then, after getting initial 12 hours of training, the board member must get 12 hours of training and continued education every three years. And the new continued education period begins on January the 1st of the following year. Please stay up to date on that. That is one thing they look at, and they are discussing now with the utility of removing two commissioners just because they don't have their training and failure to cooperate with comptroller's office. So make sure we stay up to date on that stuff there.
You're talking about those videos that we?
It is, and a lot of the train's online. And just make sure you keep up with your training certificates like this, because they will be put in their fully file. That way, we'll have the records here. And that is all I have at the moment.
Thank you, Cory. Mr. Miller?
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to thank the fire department, thank Marlowe, thank Blair, and thank Oak Ridge for the response to the house fire we had. And a neighbor of mine right up the street lost their house the other night. They had good response time, but because of certain conditions, they weren't able to save the house. But I would like to thank each and every one of them. But I thank the police department for their quick response. They were the first ones on the scene with just minutes of it being discovered. And I'd like to thank Chief and his officers. But I would like to thank each and every fireman that came out and effort that they showed to try to contain the blaze. And Cory, Valley Drive, that six-inch water line in that ditch after the cover. We got to do something with that. Today, it was running across the road coming down Orchard. And we got them heavy rains earlier this morning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We will address it.
We got to get.
What's the cover of the water line stopping at the cover?
No, the, I don't know if it's homeowner whom, but they took the phone themselves to put a six-inch water line in the ditch and backfilled in on it toward the, they're no longer a ditch area, the yard comes down flush with the road. We will.
Two o'clock, seven, or 10 o'clock, seriously?
No.
Can't miss it.
Yeah, you can't miss it. They're on the ride.
Hey, I know where you're going.
But, and I would like to thank all the city workers for getting out in this rain, this mess, and doing what they do. I really appreciate it.
For sure.
And that's all I've got, sir, at this time.
And piggyback off what Mr. Miller said about the fire department, I don't know that I've ever witnessed a fire up close and personal. So that was my first as mayor, and that was impressive. I think two-minute response time from the PD, is that correct? And then from the time that the call went out, I think fire was on scene within seven to eight minutes. Then two other agencies, like you said, Blair and Oak Ridge.
Marlowe.
Oh, and Marlowe, that's correct. Three other agencies. And it was all hands on deck. I mean, it was impressive. So very, very professional, very efficient. But like you said, circumstances outside of their control. House was unfortunately a total loss, but yeah.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, I'd thank the workers. I know I've seen them out there doing the bridges and down by the Ironhead Park area over there, too. And it looks good. And of course, unfortunately, we dealt some bad places to have to mow, but it was good to get them cut down. Also, there was a rain, and I mentioned this before, that attorney in there going into the cigarette store and the dog room in place, and then that jewelry place, it stopped up. I seen him get a other truck today. And I don't understand why he didn't want to replace that. It stopped up. And I know it's something that we addressed, I addressed it before in this council meeting, you know, and today it was running over in the road, and the guy got out of there in that rain and pulled some rock and stuff out of the grain line and cleared it up. I'm assuming it went down, but he's, he don't, we've addressed it before, I'm trying to get extension on that piece of property. Well, it's probably, he's saying it's his, our responsibility because he pays taxes. I mean, I'm just saying, we ain't got no results, and it keeps backing up. And I like it, you know, I want to thank our workers for getting out in the rain and pulling those rock and stuff out of that ditch, out of that cover, and doing it because it's a watered road. But if we can do something with it, I appreciate it. I know we do, I've addressed it here before, you know, and haven't got any results. But that whole 10 and 12 inch pipe, whatever it is, maybe it's bigger than that, but it needs to be cleaned out, whether that be our responsibility or not. But that would save, you know, a lot of heartaches if people come by there, and that one guy come by and sprayed water like 25 foot, you know? It could make some people really ill. Other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. We will, I already messaged Rusty back there. We'll try to get on this, this Van Hook.
Yes, I just want to say, I really appreciate the people who work for our town. They have been so cooperative and are really, really willing to work hard. I appreciate what they do. I also wanted to call to the police chief's attention that Airport Road is like a racetrack these days. And so you're doing such a fine job on the foreline. Could you divert somebody back there to stop a few people on Airport Road and slow them down?
Give it to you for a time.
Yes, in the evenings, probably five to nine o'clock. They are flying down Airport Road.
It'll be them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Van Hook. Mr. Hall?
All I have is, I guess, a message to the citizens. You have a street light in your area, and it works. You can actually go on CUB and get their email and tell them the coordinates, and they'll fix it. And I actually tried it myself, it worked. So if you think, you know, we can't get it done fast enough, you can actually speed it up yourself by going on the website. They have their email up in the upper right-hand corner.
It's for the note. Thank you.
All right. I do have one more thing, and if I don't bring this up, I'll be in deep trouble. Do you remember back last year when we decided to build the best blessing boxes?
Yes.
Supposed to have been two of them built. We only have one up. I don't know if that one was ever constructed or not, but we only have one up, it's over here in front of the library. And I was posed the question, why it doesn't have doors on it? Stuff, we get them wet, what?
Yeah, it has doors on it now. Doesn't, yeah, we put them back up, I know.
Okay.
The other one's going to broke off.
Did you get it on camera?
It was before they were put up.
Was it?
That's what prompted put the cameras up.
But I was asked about the second one, and I had to be honest with them, I, it kind of got shuffled off the side, and I never.
Mr. Joyce, is there a place that you would like for the second one to get?
It would be more beneficial to be in front of the police department, if possible. It may stop some vandalism.
Okay.
Like this one was only up like a month before they tore the doors up. And people need to be reminded not to cram old clothes in there.
Right.
Blessing boxes for food and that type of thing.
Okay.
The other one's built, set up in the garage, we didn't know where it was.
Okay. We'll have it up this week, or this week or next. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Rusty.
The only thing I have before against today is I have a request from the East End Marathon. If you know the one across from the skating rink, they are changing hands now, apparently as of July 25th. They are asking for a beer board, and they have submitted an application and paid their $250 fee for this. I know there was talk earlier not to kind of bring this quicker of when the next council meeting will be, but I would like to set a beer board if that's possible.
For the 3rd of August? It'll be the next?
Yeah, I don't give a left. Is that still going to be the meeting day? Um, I just, I have heard.
If it is postponed, the motion can be made in the second to reschedule the August 3rd meeting to whatever day it is, immediately followed by a beer board meeting on that same day. So I mean, nobody can.
Yeah, that's, that's what Chief was saying, Mr. Terry, man, I'll be here soon after schedule. Would they still be able to sell alcohol without the beer board meeting, or?
That is up to y'all. They, there can be a grace period, but that's only allowed up to the beer board. Generally, there is not. They have had this grace before. It's what I'm saying, they are all generally made aware of that. However, they finally got it turned in today. So with that being said, you know, there's not a chance for another council meeting to have a beer board meeting until August.
It may be that in connection with the scheduling of the beer board, the motion could include if Police Chief Laxton is satisfied with the background check, that he can, they can operate on grace until whatever the day of the meeting is. And I'm not telling y'all do that. I'm not telling you not to do that. I'm saying that could be an option where they could start selling beer on a short-term basis if the chief is comfortable with that.
And they're basically just doing a transfer of ownership. They're not changing the name. It's just basically new partners, and this gives a chance for you to talk to them and make sure that they're not going to be, you know, changing their business model.
And then at the beer board meeting, you'd have to have a form of motion second to issue the beer permit, I guess, wouldn't they?
Yes.
They wouldn't get a beer permit until the meeting.
Yeah, and basically with it falling at the end of the month, you know, everything is going to still continue falling under the business license that they are now, that's what they're buying. This is just a formality to get it in the person's name, not the business's name.
Did they just not change hands, their chief just not?
They were going to, it was under sale, and it didn't happen. But the last one that I brought for you that did was the East End Market, Ian's Market. That one did change.
Oscar did?
Yeah, it's now Ian's Market.
So do we need a motion of second, Joe?
It would be appropriate to get a motion of second to schedule a billboard meeting and have a temporary grace period. It would be appropriate to reschedule the council meeting and set a billboard meeting with a grace period at this time under comments of Police Chief Laxton. Or you could do it under new business. From a practical standpoint, it makes no difference to do it now.
Okay. So do we have a motion?
Do we want to move the meeting to the 10th?
Yeah. Can you be here, or do you need to be excused on August 3rd?
Yeah, I could be excused, but what I couldn't do is, we have a quorum problem. I could just do some driving, but I could make it. Need to be, that's what we're.
That'd be, I guess, the 10th, then, wouldn't it?
That would be the 10th. I'm not going to be here either, that's it.
All right, well, let's just move it to the 10th then.
All right.
Okay? So we'll make a motion, or have a motion of second to move it from August 3rd to August 10th, have a beer board at the end.
And water board.
Water board. And to allow Chief to allow grace for beer permit. So that's the motion.
Mayor Hall, also, we'll have to move our second public hearing.
That's correct.
Yep.
So the second public hearing would have to be August the 10th as well.
At 6:00?
Six.
Because water board is 6:30.
That's under new business.
To move?
Yeah. But you can go, you can go and do that, yeah.
Yeah.
We put all that at once?
Yeah.
Okay.
Once a lot.
I apologize.
What's the name of this business?
It's the East End Marathon. Most commonly referred to Norwood Marathon.
All right.
Is that going to cause any problem with approving, getting the budget, and everything with comptroller and all that?
Do you need to put street address in there, Chief?
Because everything should be ready to council.
We're voting at the 10th.
I believe it actually. Business license is under Norwood Marathon.
All right, so do we have a motion? Teresa makes the motion. We have a second. Mr. Miller, seconds. Any discussion? Roll call, Joe?
Barbara Miller.
Yes, sir.
Kenny Brown.
Yes.
Lisa Van Hook.
Yes.
Terry Holland.
Yes. Chief. Justin Bailey, representative for the fire department.
Nope. These are conference.
Old business. Any old business? New business? We just addressed, A, discussed setting a date for the fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget, second public hearing. That will be August the 10th at 6:00. August the 10th, 6:00 will be the second public hearing, and then we will vote that night. Okay?
So what order are we going to take it? Will the beer board be follow that, and then the water board?
No, beer board will be after council.
Okay.
Public hearing, water board, town council, beer board.
This is, B, discuss hiring a Rome County planner. Glenn, you want to step forward here real quick?
Yeah.
Sorry. So in a nutshell, here's what Rome County's doing, and Glenn can fill in more specifics. Right now, we have E.T.
East Tennessee Development.
E.T., yeah. East Tennessee Development District. They are our current planners, and... They are our current planners and Wade and Glenn, Wade Creswell is the county mayor, uh incredible gentleman, and they've launched an idea to have a planner for Rome County and I think it would personally benefit the town if we had someone from our town, from our county, helping lead the planning and development of our community. Uh, it is a little bit more from a financial standpoint, it is going to cost the town a little bit more, however, uh and Glenn can fill you in on more specifics of what advantages that brings. Go ahead.
The service you gonna get is a lot, a lot better. You will have somebody that you can get ahold of every day of the week to uh talk to and give you answers, not say I'll check and get back with you. Uh, we can have somebody up here every day if we need them with a project going on. You also gonna get information from the other parts of the county and the cities as to what's going on. And we have our own G I S department, that's under my supervision now, and we can keep you up to date on your maps and stuff. The thing is, is you're gonna get a full-time planner that you can rely on, that's gonna be able to come service this community without having to wait once a month.
For the minutes, what's the name of this?
Uh, what's the name of?
The name of the company, the group we're gonna hire?
Oh, it's Rome County. Rome County Government.
Yeah.
Okay.
County planner position.
Yeah, it's a guy, yes.
Rome County Planning Department?
Uh, yes. And uh just so you guys know, the county has passed the budget and for the position, I will be hiring an assistant planner that we will train, they will be local and they will take over once I decide I wanna retire, which won't be ten years at least, hopefully. So, I mean, that's the biggest thing is that you get somebody from in the community, not somebody from Knoxville that has ten other communities to take care of. Guys, we will be taken care of for.
And I will say this, I sit in the mayor's meetings with Wade and the other mayors in Rome County and and Wade has a very clear vision for Rome County and moving forward. Like I I didn't know him before I became mayor. Very well spoken, very articulate, uh has a good vision and whenever he brought this to me, I I can't find fault in it. Again, it may cost a little more, but I think best thing for our buck is the Rome County planner position that will help us go forward in planning, availability, accessibility, and you know the town inside and out, outside and in, and so.
What's the cost per year for the minutes?
I think it's fourteen thousand forty?
Fourteen five.
And right now we pay like nine thousand?
Seventy-six, seventy-six over current.
Okay.
New position before two five.
Two questions.
Yes, sir.
Number one, next year they gonna come at us and say we need twenty thousand this year?
Nope.
So we're locked in with this fourteen five?
We've figured the budget around what we got here and what we need to run this for a while.
Number two, Anderson County side of the city.
I asked what I'm saying.
Are they?
We can cover.
The counties, Anderson County's good with with y'all coming in on the.
The city of Auburn Springs, I mean, we do the building inspections in that part of the city also.
Correct.
I didn't know somebody up there would would have a problem with.
They, but if they do and you guys decide to do this, they have no recourse because it's in our local agreement between the city of Auburn Springs and Rome County.
And I'll say I I do have a very good working relationship with uh Mayor Terry Frank and Anderson County, so I'll, and I did ask Wade that one question and he said he didn't feel that there would be any issue whatsoever.
What kind of, what people, we're talking about bringing in your businesses or or what, you know?
Well, that's where we sit down and get to work on what's the vision you want for the city of Auburn Springs, where do you wanna be five, ten years from now, and then we start trying to develop it that way and get it where you want it, okay? Instead of letting stuff just passively happen.
You also help with writing the zoning ordinances and planning commission meetings too, don't you?
Yes, sir.
And uh, see, they do a lot of paperwork for the rezoning that comes before the planning commission, the board of zoning appeals, or if somebody wants to come in and say create a business uh in a residential area on Tri-County Boulevard that's formerly been residential, then uh his department would figure out if it be light commercial, heavy commercial, light business or light industry or heavy industry, whatever it may be, and redo all the zoning maps and repair all the zoning ordinances for the planning commission and ultimately town council to approve. And I guess they draw a new zoning map too, wouldn't you?
Yes, sir. Yeah. We'll provide an oil services just like the East Tennessee Development District did, except they're gonna give a lot more work and a lot more access.
You'll be at the planning commission meeting?
Yes, sir.
Is this something that'll come out a monthly fee or is it a one time?
It it's an annual.
Annual?
Yeah.
We gotta have it in in your hand about when?
Uh, that's up to you guys. I mean, uh, you you have a contract, I think, that's coming due with the East Tennessee Development District and, you know, if you renew that.
Yeah. I'm just, you know, with our budget right now, we're we're discussing things and if it's not in our budget, we can't do it.
I fully understand that and mayor has, have you had conversations with uh the county mayor on some of the help that he might be able to give?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I have, yes, sir.
Does that help?
Uh, no.
Okay, yeah.
So that there is potential help available from the county to help offset for uh for us for.
Fiscal year?
Yes. Yeah. Cause he understands, Wade understands where we are financially, so.
Your current county mayor, county second, has really dug in and made a big effort into focusing everybody and getting as much of the county as he can, head it together in the right direction. He has been very good addition to this county government.
And I'll say this about um the current planner that we have. I approached um in February and asked for a plan to be made for a particular parcel of land here in our town, uh roughly twenty, twenty-five acres, and was very clear in my description what I wanted and here we are, July, still haven't received it. I asked, I've asked about it on multiple occasions. I need that. I need a business plan, a vision that I can give this owner, say, hey, this is what we would do, this is what it would be valued at. Well, so I told Wade the story and he's like, you bring us on board and you will have your plan.
Okay.
So.
If if anybody will tell you, I'm not afraid of hours. I like to work, I like to be busy.
How much do we have budgeted currently for this particular?
For your F Y twenty-three, twenty-four budget, you do have the money to fulfill that position. It's built in.
Fourteen thousand?
For information, council, I have written this, that the town council would hire the Rome County Planning Department at a cost of fourteen thousand five hundred dollars per fiscal year with Mayor Stilner to apply to the Rome County Executive for possible financial assistance.
I would love to add four less.
I can put in all that.
Yeah, and I'll I'll talk to Wade about, you know, the assistance, so.
I'd like to add, dude, I've probably got eight, ten years of planning. We spent eight, ten years on signs and they're ragged out to this day. Really wasted a lot of time.
Had most of them cleaned up at one time, went through and got everybody all the way down through there. Over the years, it's just kinda got back, so it's time to go get it again.
For sure. But it shouldn't have took that long to come up with a plan. It could be really wasted some, could be going towards what the mayor.
And in this, guys, uh, I have access to a lot of tools and with our software that we've got, you guys can check on building permits in your area. You can apply one online, it gives a complaint in the city, they can put file complaint for unsafe structure. I mean, hopefully August first, we're gonna launch our whole website for building codes and planning.
When you say you have your own G I S barcode, what's the difference between that and what you get on the?
Okay, the one with East Tennessee Development District, you get put on a queue and you just sit there until your time comes up and their G I S folks can get to it. With us, I got a full-time G I S department, one person is gonna be making it for the property assessor, everybody wants to get their taxes. And then the other one, he is full-time for projects for cities, county and stuff. And we will make those decisions based on the need and want which is to come up to top priority and uh the gentleman that does that for us is very good. Jake has done some wonderful projects for us. And he certified too, so.
Have I know when the East Tennessee expires? I'm not a hundred percent sure, to be honest. It's August, so.
It's fall, I'm not sure the exact day that's fall.
We'll we'll get it definitive um this week. Any further discussion? So do we have a motion to accept Rome County planning uh planner position?
And that probably would be from the threat from the current contract expiry.
Correct.
I'll say it in advance.
So we have a motion, we have a second. Any more discussion?
This mayor talked about change and diversification. This should be the first step and considering change.
That's correct. For sure.
In this town.
Yeah.
It does, it's well worth the seven thousand dollars.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, and I'll uh, I've got some stuff I wanna throw at you, so. I was talking to Corey just yesterday to that, or yesterday about it, so I've got I've got some people ready to build. All right, so ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your, thank you so much. And we will work our exercise out for a few, thank the hot floor and services. All right, we need, we got a motion, we have a second. Roll call Joe.
Robert Miller?
Yes, sir.
Kenny Brown?
Yes.
Chris Van Hook?
Yes.
Kerry Holland?
Yes. Thank you, council.
Discuss twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Safety Partners Matching Grant Program. The Safety Partners Grant provides funding for public entity partners members to purchase safety and loss prevention items and training aimed at reducing work-related incident, injuries and accidents.
Corey? This is one thing that Wendy's followed up, uh been following up on, uh it's up to two thousand dollars and it's gonna be used for um, you know, road construction signs, maybe even the A E Ds, first aid kits, stuff like that. We just need a motion to proceed uh with the application for this grant program.
So do we have a motion to proceed forward for the paperwork for the grant?
What would the amount of the grant be?
It's up to two thousand dollars.
Up to two thousand?
Yeah.
I saw that.
So we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Second. Second by Mr. Brown. Any more discussion? Roll call Joe.
Robert Miller?
Yes, sir.
Kenny Brown?
Yes.
Chris Van Hook?
Yes.
Kerry Holland?
Yes.
Well, do we have a motion to, so move? Second. Town of Auburn Springs manager?